Okay, are we ready to get started then?
Before Kathy begins, can I make a bit of a disclosure? So Kathy is gonna discuss revenue cycle management, so I just wanted to let the board, the members who are new, know that I do own a revenue cycle management company. However, my revenue cycle management company doesn't do anything anywhere in Wyoming or anything to do with hospitals. My revenue cycle management company is purely physician practice based, so it's very different than what we do here. But I did wanna let all of you know that I do work in the healthcare industry and I do own a revenue cycle management company. If at any time, any of you are ever uncomfortable, or just please let me know. Like I said, I don't believe that I have any conflict at all. I've never taken a dime from this hospital. I'm a volunteer and I always will be. And anything that I do do for this hospital, this board, I do purely voluntarily. And like I said, I don't see any conflict in what I do, but if anybody else does, please, feel free. I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Okay, well, I think, I wrote this down twice, maybe I was just thinking about revenue a lot. There's a company that used to be called Revenue, Revenue Cycle Management, it's now called RI. That company is still working on a proposal for us relative to meeting our needs. Theirs might look a little bit different than the one that you're gonna look at tonight that has some prices and stuff attached with it in the executive session. They both do somewhat the same job, it depends on how we go about looking at things. So, one of the things that you'll need to think about is, as they mentioned, there's end-to-end types of revenue cycle, which means they could take care of literally everything relative to the revenue cycle. Or we can parcel parts of it out and have other parts of it taken care of by our staff. So, what that means is that, for example, we wanna keep our registration in place because that's front door stuff and making sure that we're taking care of that. Most likely, that's community, each piece, that's a whole lot of things. The other piece that would probably be important is self-pay, because we're a small community and we really want people that are here and available to talk to people about self-pay. So, those kinds of things may be something you wanna consider as a carve-out. And then, it's just looking at the differences. We still need to maybe negotiate some prices, 'cause I don't think we've negotiated the prices with the NOL for sure. And we don't have all the information with RI. I was hoping to have both of them, so that we could go forward. I do, I personally have felt for, like, the whole time I've been here, that this was a priority, but now that we have an assessment from outside, I think it's important that not only the assessment that we have from our own internal control pieces are looking at those things, we just validated all of it with the assessment that we had. And so, I do think it's an urgent matter. I don't think it's a sit on it much longer, because we've got some bills that are gonna timeout on the denial end of it and that sort of thing. So as you go to think about what portions of it we may want to expand and how we might wanna run those departments, I just want you to be aware of that. That there's different pieces and we can talk about that further, but, and of course, they all have price tags attached with them, but at least we have some decisions that we can make.
I think, when you, that you should, and the rest of the board, I want you to chime in on this, but I think that when you get the information from this other deal, we just probably need to have a meeting and deal with the rest of the way to next month. Does the rest of the board agree with that?
No.
I'm generally against all non-regular meetings unless there's a darn good reason. So, I won't have to say that again.
This is about as darn good a reason as you can get, anyway.
Me and I'm a rookie, I'm quite willing to take your word.
The one thing that I'm reminding everybody is, I'm going to Scotland, so I'll be gone for two weeks. That's got me bothered, because I don't have that RI piece. So you'd either have to decide to look at those with Tish when I'm not here, and see what you guys wanna do, if you wanna do that, to make a decision, a solid decision. I don't know what you wanna do to be able to do it in two weeks, or we'd have to do it in like three weeks.
But that means it's almost gonna...
I know, but I...
I would really be, not, I wouldn't say uncomfortable, but probably uncomfortable with making a decision without Kathy, real currently, but I think that's valuable, it's to make a decision.
The other thing that can happen is that we can look at both proposals and know what is willing to do, either temporary and or permanent. So there is that chance too, that we can start something if we decide to. So those are our opportunities. I had a third company, but that company didn't end up being what we needed for our facility. They were pretty much more engaged in larger, larger people, larger companies.
Bigger fish.
Yeah, bigger fish.
And we are talking, this is a significant change and it's a lot of money. So, I had asked Kathy to come up with as many quotes as she could, and she looked a lot in making up the two.
I can try to get another third, but the third, like, just by the time they called in, it didn't work. And I went to the top 10 companies and unfortunately, there was, I described what I needed, and so some probably self-selected out. And I, these two I got, you know, we got feedback from immediately, so that's what I'll say. Software updates, so you'll probably remember that we did a software, well, maybe we won't remember, but we did a software update. It wasn't quite as expensive as this next one's, a software update for Omnicell, because it was 2007. Well, we've discovered that the mammogram machine is a 2007 software piece as well as the blood gas analyzer. The good news on the blood gas analyzer is it's incorporated into the cost of the blood gas analyzer to be able, for them to update it, so they just inadvertently forgot to do that for us. And so, they are going to be updating that. The mammogram machine is not that way. We bought the mammogram machine from a, like, kind of a third-party vendor, and so they don't have any kind of support for the upgrade in the... The company has MedSource Imaging, and they will charge us for the mere price of $35,000. We can get a update to our CPU CMP, basically our software program. The reason that this is important and a critical spend is because if we don't do that, what we have is an open hole for hacking. We're underneath, we don't meet the standards for it. So, for example, we've decided to turn the mammogram machine off when we're not using it, so that there's no software piece going on. And then when we use it, we're going ahead and turning it on. I haven't stopped us using it, because we went away without knowing that we were out of date. And so, I said, "Well, we'll just take our chances on doing the mammogram," but then we shut it off. The blood analyzer, like I said, that one's being taken care of, or that would've been another $35,000 worth. So today, you know, even though it's not fun, I am asking you all to support that, because otherwise, we are at risk for compliance.
So, I don't know, so when we were, when we were looking, I was in town in New York on Tuesday, so I came to the finance committee, and it looked like I'm a prophet in laws, that the whole radiology department is brought in $100,000 cleared last month. Is that right?
Yep.
I'm not telling stories.
No.
So anyway, I mean, the $35,000 is huge, but it has to be done, and they are a revenue generator.
It's their choice.
Yeah, there's not a choice, in any way.
Well, it's either, don't use it, shut it off, like you say, and not have one.
Shut it off, but eventually we can have control.
Absolutely, yeah. And we're just doing it, because Wendy will kill me if we have it open all the time for us, now that she knows that that's, because it's just set prime for hackers. And then we'd be dealing with cybersecurity issues, and that's gonna worse.
So, how soon can we get this done?
We got a 90-day warranty on it, that's not what I wanted to say. We can get it right away, as long as you guys approve it. So we've got it already set up to be able to purchase it, because without the invoice, we just need to be able to get the...
Then this is just for a one-time update, or it's not?
It's a one, yeah, it's a one-time update, but it should last for a couple of years. I'm not gonna promise, 'cause of the hackers in the world, but it should last for a couple of years.
Six months.
I think most people went from 2007 to 2010, or at least our group did, because that's what I'm finding, is the thing's 2007. We're just glad that nobody really knows where Newcastle is, I guess, right now, to hackers. So...
Thankfully, we just let them know.
Yeah, right.
So, let's, let's...
So, I would entertain a motion of some sort.
This is what it's called, it's just software update for the mammogram.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we authorize Kathy to engage a software update for the mammogram machine and the blood gas analyzer, not to exceed $35,000.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there any particular vendor?
Yes, it's the one that we have the priority...
Do I have to put that in my motion, even?
Well, I'd be vouch for it if I knew the vendor.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to authorize Kathy to enter into a software upgrade with MedSource Imaging, for a cost not to exceed $35,000 for a software update on the mammogram machine and the blood gas analyzer. Which, okay.
Okay.
I can second it.
You already seconded it.
No, usually I don't.
Is there any more discussion? Was there any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed, nay. We have approved my...
Well, as is what happens on weekends, the air conditioner went out, and we were having problems with it. So, maintenance guy came in and they were able to work with an electrical person, kind of deferred, and we were able to use one of our controllers, but one of our controllers is burnt out now. The second, the one that we're able to use right now for the air conditioning, is needing a new switch. So that I've already, that's not gonna cost us a lot of money. The air conditioner update, we're putting in the piece that we need, that's gonna cost between $5,000 and $7,000. That's within my budget, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, because that would be an expense I wasn't planning on. I think I get regular ones, but anyway, that's what I haven't had in plan, and that's a guess, that's what I was given a guess to know. If it's more than that, I can let you know. It does bring me up, someday I would like y'all to think about. It seems like everything that breaks in this building practically costs me $32,000 to $35,000, and especially the stuff that's an emergency. So, I think your current amount that you have me approve for is $10,000, but I will always report anything that's broken and has to be repaired, but I wondered if when you guys get to working on the biological, if you consider upping that a little bit, because otherwise, I have to put a special meeting together for you guys to come in to do that. And that may, you know, I don't want it to be outrageous, but if it could be a little more, it would be helpful, just as a request. On women's health and pediatrics, I did talk to a couple of, well, I have more calls than I ever want from people for recruitment and stuff, but I've been looking a little bit at, I'd say to them, "Well, really all I'm looking for is women's health and pediatrics." And I want a female, because we need a female provider in our clinic that's, that does that kind of work. And so, I do have, I did have a couple of candidates. One was a doctor that they showed me, that, she lives in Georgia, so I talked to her about here. She had said to them that she was willing to come to work. And I talked to her for a while, I was not convinced that it was a fit, so I decided to nix that one. I have an FNP, a family nurse practitioner with 10 years of experience, and she does family, well, she does all family practice, but she does focus on women's health and she does focus on pediatrics, and has had lots of residency time and stuff doing that. So, what, she would come from a, she would come from a recruiting company, but they offered me a 15% deal for a, which is really low compared to what we usually have to pay, somewhere between 30% to 50% for us to recruit her and using their company. So, all I wanted is a discussion about, do we wanna wait till we find somebody, puristically, which I'm trying to do still, or do we want to try to look at a vendor helping us to try to get somebody, and at a reduced price? I went ahead and signed the contract for the 15%, not because we were gonna do anything with it, but because I'm gonna capture a amount of 15% when I do need it sometimes, so, but what do you guys think? And I will tell you too, my other kind of thing is, I think I put it in the letter, that an MD is sort of the niche I'd like to find, and the reason for that is that it kind of is a competitive, of a competitive nature, 'cause we can have an MD to be able to do that, women's health and pediatrics versus a nurse practitioner, which we have a couple of female nurse practitioners down the road, so it would be a little bit different.
Where's this nurse practitioner from?
She is in, she's from Texas, but they want to move to Wyoming, because they have, that's their goal, her husband's selling his business and retiring, he's a little older than she is, and he, and they wanna live up in this area, in this kind of lifestyle. So that's why I think that she would potentially be okay for us.
To me, it feels like, I would rather, I want to see somebody who fits, regardless of whether, what, whether it's an MD or a nurse practitioner. I mean, like, I would rather see somebody that...
Somebody that fits.
Somebody that fits the community, fits, that to me is important.
Okay, well, I didn't make copies of this person's, no, we don't need to do it tonight, but she's been used to seeing up to 45 patients per day, which means that she was like in a cattle run thing. So I think that it would be good that she's ambitious like that and can do it, but it would also be good to have her at more of what our rate is and having really good care. The other thing is, is that she's been part of diabetes and hypertension and wellness care programs and that sort of thing, and I'd like to start to introduce that into our clinic, now that we have a clinic director. So, and part of it is because I really wanna get a hold of part of that rural transformation money, program money, 'cause that's a huge grant, and we don't have that stuff in place right now, so we'd actually be proactively getting people in for wellness visits and screenings and things like that. So, you know, at first I was gonna try not to use a company, but then it's like, maybe it would work, this could work, where she can come, we can try her out and see if she's fit for a, one rotation of her term, of her, as a locum. That's a good way to try them out, sometimes.
The other thing, I mean, the other thing, to me, it seems like the siding between the MD and a nurse practitioner, I mean, it feels like, once she's here for a few months, you're gonna have an idea of what, I might not say a few months, but of what you want, too. I mean, though you...
And I think that Kathy and I have the same vision of what we're thinking, and the age that we're in, and getting a patient like a beautiful woman that's gonna be willing out, and we talked about that today. It's actually nice that if she's willing to come as a locum, that you can...
Yeah, then we can try, yeah. She's very nice, and she's called me a couple times now, 'cause I talked to her in the evening one night, but she's really wanting to be able to come and try, get out here. So, it's putting somebody in that's a locum, but on the flip side, we can only gather so much money with two full-time physicians, and I really did a performer a while back ago for four people, so I did do the performer based on that, and so you would get more increases in visits capability, because of having that person. Is it, is it any risk involved? Yep, there's a risk involved.
So how long would she be here if we did a focal?
If we did a focal, we could get her to come from October 6th all the way to January 30th if we wanted to, and then that would give us enough time to probably have a good sense of her.
Exactly, and I think that fit is important, and that might be a good way to determine.
We'll find out if she fits in with the cold.
So...
But also, she's not moving into Jackson Hole, you know? She may think that Wyoming is...
Well, I mean, she does some things that, the pap smears, the immunizations, the wellness visits, the INDs and things like that, that people, but she's, she's sound on the part of, we don't have any of the abortion issues going on or anything, okay? So, 'cause I'm very careful about that. But I appreciate your problem, I feel the same way, I just am careful.
We really do have a need for needs, or the needs present.
But we do have a need for women's health, I get that more than anything from people enough, that they don't have a primary care position to go and get their yearly physicals, because everybody's either there and then gone, or they don't know.
And it's so much nicer to go to somebody, the same person, Emily, you know?
I mean, I get, Jan Mason is gone, people were always, I mean, women went to her because she was a woman, let's face it. So, that would be really great if we got somebody for women's health.
Well, I wanted to kinda see what you said, then I'm gonna turn this over to Tish and Prish. Oh, this is killing me. They know what jules means, and they know this. And so, and then I think, I usually have the medical director call and talk to them too, so then we can, but I mean, they're asking me about the vendor, so if you guys could even, even if it's Dr. McCarty, you guys wrestle it tomorrow, that would be good.
Can we have anybody at the clinic seeing pediatricians?
No, not really. They don't see, they see the teenagers sometimes, but they...
They're willing to, right.
Laura's willing to see the pediatrics, but none of them are comfortable with it, not one of them. And so, well, Dr. McCarty sees patients. Yeah, that's right, he does. Dr. McCarty, I forgot. Yeah, Dr. McCarty will see patients, but I think I'm trying to look for people that know that they're gonna go to this person for their pediatric care, blah, 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 and their women's health pieces. So, yes, he does, either, he will do that, sorry, he will. I've already got a job assigned for me, he doesn't know about right now, which is to run our diabetes clinics that we're gonna have, so anyway.
I do think that's important.
Yeah.
That, to me, those sorts of things are actually, what will actually help our community, are those, right.
Right. So I think what I do need from you is a motion to go ahead and explore bringing a family nurse practitioner in to see if she could be a fit for our pediatric, you know, just for the clinic, so, because that's money I'm spending.
So, should we, is that somebody willing to make a motion? You want Tish?
I, Tish, you want... No, I'm not making any motions, sorry.
What does explore mean in this context?
Well, what it means is that, when you get providers in, and we've had this happen, you get a provider in, you like to find out what you do, as best you can to make sure that their background's fine, everything's good, she doesn't have any pending lawsuits or any of those kinds of things, and then their skill sets that they say that they have, and then you try to make sure that they match with the community, and that's the exploring part, and that they match with the skills they said they have, and...
So it includes the money, expenditure of the money to perhaps bring that woman from Texas up there?
Right.
Besides explore, we're talking about spending money, thank you.
Yes, yes.
And we've had, we've had, I'm thinking of one person in particular, we had, had, we looked good, Kathy brought her in, and then it just didn't work out.
Well, just so I can be PC for myself, I did not bring that woman in.
Okay, okay, that's all. I do remember, I do remember, it was not you.
No. I dealt with it, but...
You remember the meeting, but it was not you.
It was around the time you were interviewing me, which was brought in by the previous CEO, not named.
But it does, that, anyway, it might be easier to try them out.
Part of explore, and to William, is making sure that we have the volume of patients to keep another provider in our clinic busy, so...
Yeah, exactly.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuq Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Okay.
The concern is somewhat, and I understand women's health and the need for a doctor or a medic provider, is that we have maybe not enough individuals over there that take care of pediatrics, and we're filling a hole because we didn't fill the hole when we hired them.
Well, first of all, we do have wellness information. I would agree that the staff haven't been well-versed in doing wellness visits, but that's, I worked for a pediatric clinic, for example, as a long time ago nurse, and that pediatric doctor taught me how to work in the back with pediatric patients. And a lot of what they do with the wellness checks, the first part of it, the nurse does, and then the provider comes in and looks at the milestones and makes decisions relative to their milestones. And so, it is a partnership. I'll remind you that we have a very rich environment, because we have four RNs and an MA. So, I would probably put in RN with that person, I don't know if she agrees with that, and then that way, you have a nice fleet of people to take care of those patients. The other thing is, that we can't miss out on is the fact that we do have Laura, but she does walk-in clinic, and we really get asked a lot for women to be in the clinic to take care of some of those in it.
And pediatrics.
Yes, yeah.
But I mean, at this time, in Kathy's defense, when we hired the last provider, we had a geriatric need that was bigger than our pediatric need, so we filled that, so, you know, we're, we're working through that, to the point where we can diversify and look at other people.
look at other needs too, so.
Well, and then Dr. McCarty is affiliated with University of Colorado, and we'll probably be able to get him to bring students down here to us, thirty, how many residents, to do some programs with us.
Very focused. What would this motion you're hoping to hear say?
Would allow me to sign a contract for a family nurse practitioner.
I move.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Is that, that's a tip or are you just?
Yes.
I would say.
Okay. All of those are, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same? Okay.
You, thank you. Just wanted to remind you all that Rebecca Mock is the HR director that we just hired, and she's going to be, and she's going to be starting September 8th. And she's looking at a house in Upton.
There's one for sale.
Huh?
There's a nice one for sale.
Yes, that's the, must be the one. It's probably the one she's looking at because she's putting an offer in on a house out there.
It'd be good.
It'll be good. So, that's, and then Tricia Linford, who's back here, heard when everyone's still on, that this is, she's a welcome to the clinic as the clinic director. I've seen all Ricky Great strikes from her. We have a lot of work to do, don't we?
Yes.
Yes. But why don't you tell them a little bit about yourself and then maybe anything that you think are some of your top priorities?
Well, I'm T2, that's T1 down there. So, I've been, I've been working in hospitals for almost thirty-six years. The last three years I've been implementing software with work. Happy to not be traveling weeks at a time. So far this week, we've established a quality improvement project initiative. We have established co-payment collection criteria. We're pulling data mining out of Epic. We have got a preauthorization process in place so that when we see a patient on the clinic, we're already querying their insurance to let me know exactly what their benefits and eligibility are. We are working closely with radiology and to with Tish's long-term project is that we're going to try to maybe either get some kind of a registration hub so that we can communicate better with our patients if we send them on to testing. I'm meeting with my staff one-on-one, and we'll continue to do that, working on goals, making sure that they understand my expectations. That has been interesting to get to know them and have them start to trust me. Just really starting to do quality standards with patient care and trying to get some outside opinions of how we can do things better. We've also been working with maintenance as of today to try and do some beautification of the outside appearance of the clinic and trimming some trees and things like that to try and make it a little bit more welcoming. We also have decided that we're going to start decorating for our holidays over time and make it a little bit more welcome. So, as you come in, you'll see a little bit more change, maybe not so drab and jury. But for the most part, I really appreciate Kathy's opportunity to be here and support the community and the forward thinking that I have experienced so far. Everybody's been very warm and welcoming, and they are not judging me for however many times I called them a dascal or something because it's just filling it out. But it's a beautiful place to live and to work, and we're excited to be here. We've been in Wyoming for about eight years, and it's just great. I really love our leadership team, and it's gonna be a good opportunity, I think, to grow professionally and personally here. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have one, please.
Okay.
So, in the past, customer service has been one of the greatest things I hear from the public that just chases them away from home. So, can you tell us a little bit what you're looking at there?
Well, so I'm making myself visible right now and to make sure that as I'm walking in and out, that I'm making eye contact to make sure that the patients are feeling very welcome. I think that communication with customer service is extremely important. I think that we turn a lot of people away because we're not asking the right questions or verifying the information, and therefore by the time that they receive the final end of service, they're frustrated. I think by welcoming and making sure that our outside appearance, our inside appearance, that we're present and that we're focused on our patients as they walk in is gonna make a huge difference. And so, moving forward, if you hear of anything, I'm always up to suggestions. Right now, we're kind of just trying with a little bit of flow in the morning and just kind of working together.
That's pretty huge.
Yes.
And I've been updating Kathy. I'm used to providing detailed information. I'm not sure that she's loving all the detailed information that I've provided her, but-
What did I say?
It's, uh-
I said it was a welcome.
You just have to work as a partnership. And even though we are a standalone clinic, it's so very important for the community to understand that we're one unit, and I think that we just need to get back into that. And by hiring a locum to bring in that kind of revenue, I think it will show commitment to the patients that we're serving as well as to our Upton communities instead of losing that revenue to either Spirit Fish or Gillette. And where she's done chronic care, which is something that we're going to work on as an improvement project, she's already had that establishment, so I think that we'll utilize her information while she's here to help us get that off the ground at the same time, so.
And there's a potential, right, that she would not move from locum to, to-
If we don't, if she's not a fit.
If it's a, but if it is a fit, right.
Then we can move her to permanent, and we have a fifteen percent, which is the lowest I've ever gotten.
Yeah, that's not bad.
A fifteen percent sign-on for the annual wage, so.
And then, and then does that fifteen percent go away?
Yeah, we just pay this as a part-time.
So, fifteen percent of annual salary?
Yeah, yeah.
So, for that one-dayer annual salary, it would be a dollar in a day?
Yeah. Yeah, and if I can get her to sign it, and then we'll just, can you sign this? And does it look market? I don't understand, you know? So, I'm pretty sure they-
Just tell her that's a typo. We'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah. I like your thinking. So, the other piece is the DZA letters. These letters are, the first one is to terms for engaging and just to engage in having them prepare our cost reports and do our consulting for our audit. I mean, the cost report-
Tish was talking about the one that's done in November or whatever.
Right, yeah. And then the second one here is for the, the cost report. It's the much more detailed on the audit scope as far as what they're going to be doing. They'll do the Medicare cost report for the hospital, the World Health Clinic, number one and number two, and Medicaid nursing home cost report. The total cost of the agreement is, well, I'm not gonna do it in my head, but it's nine thousand, it's twenty-six, twenty-nine, twenty-six, nine fifty is the total amount that it will cost us for the reports. And we have budgeted for that, right?
Oh, yeah, we budgeted a little higher than that.
So, then what I need to have you all-
I said that one.
What I, I need you guys to approve having DZA again. That would be our third year. I recommend we do stay with DZA mainly because they've gone through the hot messes that we had for those two months, two years of data, and they have their feet on the ground and have worked with us for a while now. So, they understand kind of where we're at with everything. I guess that's, that's pretty much it. And there's a place for you to sign as a governance if you guys do approve it.
So, do you need us to approve that?
Yes. You want this, here's the numbers. You wanna look at the numbers, too?
Is it, is it okay, Allison? Is it okay for us to do that even though it wasn't on the agenda?
It's, uh, well, well, that's, we could add it to the agenda really quick. I thought, I just got this today.
It just takes the motion and second to consider it.
Thank you. I just got it today.
Okay, so if somebody can move that we, that we consider this DZA letter?
I believe we consider the DZA.
One second, very second.
I think it's more than you consider. You have to say that you're going to, that we're gonna use DZA.
So, we consider it first, then we, then it puts it onto the agenda.
Right.
And then, then it's discussed.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so, so all those in favor of considering the DZA letter, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Okay, so, consider away as it passes.
Yeah, consider away. This, well, you have the copies too, so I'll sign your copies.
Okay, so, do we have, are they in this?
I thought she gave it to you, but here, this is mine. It's Barney's.
We wonder, what's the point of the agenda?
Sorry. Well, when you only get here there-
I'm not trying to, we've talked about it.
So, so here, you can look at that one.
In the past, we have gotten quotes from three different companies, and that was three years ago. And then we, we had to decide about that time to move forward with DZA, but-
To do our audit.
To do our audit and our cost report. And we choose, we, at that time, DZA was the least expensive. They were the least expensive, and in light of all that we've gone through in the past three years, I happen to agree with Kathy that it's probably not, like, we're finally on a path with somebody who knows what we've been through for the past three years, and at some point, we should have another company come in and, and look at our books, but not now.
Yeah, and usually you change after three years anyway.
So, I think maybe next time, we should go through the whole process of getting new quotes and, and looking at other companies and stuff, but I-
Twenty-seven thousand, is it?
It was a lot more. When we had the, the other, they were a lot more, but it was also a lot more, even with DZA, that first report cost us like seventy-six thousand dollars because of all the work that had to go.
And these are, the audit and the cost report are required, so they're required that they be done every year.
Unique as well too, because there's two, there's two different documents. One is the engagement letter and the other is the contract.
So, if the consideration is over, then I would be happy to make a motion to-
It's for Tish.
Is, is everyone comfortable with that? Um, so, in that regard, make a motion that we engage DZA accounting advisors to do our cost report and our audit, um, for total cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Is that, is that quite enough?
It was, she skipped, she said twenty-six, nine fifty.
Actually, yes.
I just thought I saw- Was it wrong?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven, exactly.
Is it twenty-seven?
Well, I hadn't looked at it for a while.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure.
No, I'm not the CFO in it, so. I did it in my head. I knew I shouldn't do it.
Close.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any more discussion? Did we, oh, yeah, so William's second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Okay, so, we have, I haven't signed it yet.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is terrible. You don't want any, nobody wants-
No, you'll put on pounds just thinking about eating that stuff. My gosh, that was good.
I don't have any more.
Like a, I wish the cake would moisture, but a lot of peanut butter and chocolate.
Kathy, I'm just gonna wait and sign this afterwards, just to make sure that I signed it in the right place.
Yes, I'll, I'll reply to that.
Kathy just says your signature on it. You want it back?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the engagement letter I can sign on my own. I have a new girl, but the contract I have to have to hold.
Okay, okay. So, are we ready for the foundation report?
Oh, yes, the foundation report. They had, they had a meeting. I was gonna mention that to you guys today too. We don't have anybody for the commit, for the foundation committee now, and I think you need one more person for financial.
Right.
So, just, just as brought up as I mentioned. The foundation committee met and we didn't, we talked about the dance with the father daughter dance. We didn't have a lot of participation yet, so we decided to delay it before we do that. So, that's been delayed. We talked a little bit about some scholarships that were available. We didn't have a finance report. And, but I will tell you, we just told them that we got forty thousand dollars in for the CT machine, so that's really good, and that came from Barbara Crowe and her husband. So, so they, they provided forty thousand towards our CT project.
That was very, very nice.
Very, yeah, very, very nice. So, we're, we're getting close and what we, what Keisha found out with the CT project is even if there's money left on it, that we have that loan piece, it's less money than the contract for our service agreement is on our current, and, yeah, and our current CT machine. So, what we're saying is it's basically gonna wipe out the, wash the cost of it. So, that'd be good. And I think that's all I have except for executive session.
Okay, does anybody else have any, any more, anything else? Let me talk about here. So, probably what we should do is make a motion to, we need another break after, before we leave. Are we getting?
Quick break, please.
Okay, okay. So, so a five-minute break, and then we'll generally make a motion and maybe the executive session.
Can we, or if, if it's our equipment, that we, that we maybe put thank you in on the paper form?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna-
You may be nervous to have to make a statement.
And I'm zooming in on Carrie eating.
You know, I work for the ophthalmologist too, of which we have none.
So, these are, these are quality, financial, character, personal, and that's that. Myself, just as a, as a, yeah, something, like, government, it's just, we don't, we very seldom, no, that's really, yeah, just a little bit, but it's, it's a lot of my body loss, it's myself, and there is, you know, but there's, yeah.
Is that what you called Ganesh? Okay. No, it's Ganesh.
So, I did, I immigrated, but you know, for the last time.
I kind of missed it.
I have to get my Friday off. Well, what is, the two that Karina was on, I know what this is about, what is this? What, so Kathy, what is the med staff?
A med staff is a meeting at eight o'clock in the morning on the Tuesday after the board meeting. Yeah, I think that's the right one. And, um, really what it involves is just being, every quarter, you, you don't have to go every month, but if you go every quarter, there's what we call a joint committee meeting. And you would just attend it and listen to what's going on and, and then just report back anything that's important. But there's quality information, there's credentialing information there, that we, we do some peer review stuff. We're learning how to do that, like peer review stuff.
They let you, they, they talk to you for the first ten minutes and then they throw you out because the rest of the meeting is confidential.
Yeah, that's true. Well, truthfully, um, yeah, providers have a lot of way away from having confidentiality.
I can't help you rejoin, but you're on mute.
We have not rejoined, we all here.
We're just live. Okay, so, anyway, um, that's, that's really what that's about, I mean.
So that's on Tuesday enough.
But it's eight o'clock in the morning, you made some coffee flow.
No, that's on Fridays. She said Tuesday, so I, I, I picked up on that.
They get, they get the part, they get some of the part group results, but they usually are done. They're getting used to executive committee, they never knew they were supposed to have a lot. So I'm trying to teach them a lot of that because there's stuff that has to be private amongst just a small number of people. And so, um, yeah, that part is, is just a few people, but, um.
So would somebody let me know ahead of time?
Yes, we'll just say, see if you may know.
No, I'd like to let me know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I'll send you and his, right.
I, I can do this, what Karina was on, but. And so does that, are you happy to? Did I just hear?
Mary.
Mary, is she, are you gonna do validation? Is that what I just heard? Oh, okay. And that's the one. That's cool.
And then you guys need somebody else? Do you still need somebody else on finance or you guys are good?
Well, I'm guessing, so William, are you interested in joining up with the finance committee?
Would.
Sound, sound good to everybody.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
It's another meeting, but.
It's the.
You know, but my wife's gonna be glad to find out that she doesn't have to cook on the.
Well, finance, we don't get.
I, I, I don't think you have finance, because you might stay too long.
The Tuesday goes forward.
The one, four meeting at four o'clock.
Unless you want.
Which my wife is.
Yeah, and for the next couple of months, it's gonna be going just.
I don't think we want that. So unless, so just depending on what, what you think as far as the foundation goes. Because I just, if they need somebody, that's fine, but if you'd rather do it next.
So then.
Where?
Uh, she's kicked out, Mark said she couldn't go to his, by his foundation.
But then he said Joanne and.
I'll remind you.
We said that.
Said they were gonna ask, they didn't care what he said. Well, then, and somebody asked me, and I, they thought it was conflict.
It's just a committee, so I don't have to do anything.
He just likes the teeth, you know.
So, that doesn't help me figure out though whether Ben, or whether Mary or, or Dottie should be on the foundation.
That's you guys' gig.
Yeah, okay, well, well. We'll talk about it after. Okay, um. Does somebody want to move into executive session? I make a motion to go into executive session.
At seven forty five.
At seven forty five.
You fell for it.
I make a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee, and to consider receiving information classified as confidential by law, including attorney, client, or client communications, quality information, and trade secrets. At seven forty five. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same.
I'm just sitting this right now.
So what does that mean?
I didn't vote, I was right now.
Best way to know the world is to read your local paper, and I'm gonna give you another hint, being a paper boy. When you get your local paper, like my mom used to do, put the front section away and go to the metro section. That's where all the great dirt is. So you read the metro section, read the metro section, and you will start to become so much smarter than the kids that are just academically debating, right? It'll be common sense and street smarts.
Really quick, last question, I gotta, we gotta welcome Secretary Noem.
So yeah, Kristi Noem was, was the next guest to take the stage there, but, uh, boy, again, I mean, none other than, than President Donald Trump is committed to a printed newspaper. I mean, as fan clubs go, I'll, I'll, I'll take that one, uh, in, in the whole, uh, modern political landscape. Donald Trump, Megyn Kelly, Steve Bannon, and, and Charlie Kirk, at least in Wyoming, I guess. Those are some pretty powerful names supporting printed newspapers.
Okay.
Okay, are we good now?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we authorize Kathy to engage.
In NOVA.
In NOVA, um. We authorize Kathy to engage, uh, Inova RCM service for billing and credentialing, and authorize Kathy to negotiate a, a contract for said services, billing and credentialing.
Not to exceed.
To start, not to exceed.
By six. Not to exceed six percent. Well, okay, what do you guys want me to do? You can, you could put it to the eight, but I'm not gonna take it at eight, I'm gonna get it down.
Well, we can be unfortunate. I'd be in favor.
Yeah, I'm just just gonna leave it and negotiate and.
What about coding?
I'm coding. Coding.
Three functions.
Yeah.
Well, incredentially.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize Kathy to negotiate with Inova for billing, credentialing, and coding services.
Yeah, and then I think what.
And to make the necessary, uh.
Well, length of, to, to make a contract no longer than, do you want it no longer than two years or?
I was just gonna leave it open.
Okay, just say then negotiate the contract, I know my limits, you guys.
Negotiate the contract. Do, do we need to add anything about making the necess, making whatever, sort of restructuring?
Oh.
Restructuring, whatever.
In this, in this motion?
I think it would be separate motions.
I would favor separate.
Okay, that's my motion.
Yeah, and. For clarification, does, what, what, what was the verb, you're authorizing Kathy to negotiate?
To.
Does negotiate include enter? Negotiating a contract includes entering a contract?
Negotiate and enter into a contract.
Well, she didn't say and enter. But you meant that, so we will include that.
Okay, so I, I make a motion to authorize Kathy to negotiate and, if the terms are favorable, enter into a contract for billing, credentialing, and coding with Inova Revenue Cycle Management.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Second. Thank you for doing it. You wrote it three times.
So that's been.
I have a stroke every time.
She needs to write it down.
So, I make a motion to authorize Kathy to negotiate.
And enter into.
And enter into.
And if acceptable.
Do enter into.
A contract. For billing. Credentialing.
And code.
And coding services. With Inova, I-N-N-O-V-A. I, uh.
I got it.
Okay, Revenue Cycle Management.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
In there, if they, terms acceptable, they're terms.
Maybe it's Inova Revenue.
Well, yeah, if terms are acceptable, is the last part.
There's shit. If they're in, if, if terms are acceptable.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
So we need to vote on it yet, but we're just.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, the same. Okay, the one that has passed. William.
Wait, I'm tired. You need another one?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I make a motion that if Kathy is, signs a contract with Inova.
Hey.
I make a motion that she make whatever.
Restructuring.
Restructuring of. Just business office or?
Restructuring, uh, you could say that if you want.
The business office.
So it's district contracts with Inova, we're authorizing her to restructure the business office.
Yeah.
You all say that?
So if. I think my sentence is all completely off.
I have motion made, if Kathy signs contract with Inova, restructuring of business office.
We authorize her to make whatever.
To restructure the business.
To restructure the business office.
Maybe it's.
We hold on.
We authorize. Kathy. To restructure the business office. Does that make sense?
I will second that.
Discussion.
Yes, is there any discussion?
That we weren't going to, uh, suggest restructuring until after Scotland.
That's true, but you can still have the motion.
Yes, because that we don't, you don't have to wait a month to do that.
Right, right.
I, I, that's where I was gonna go with that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna put that on other people, we can't do that now.
And it would, it would work.
Right, good point.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, so, all those in favor of authorizing Kathy to restructure the business office when she gets back from Scotland, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Well, I voted, but that wasn't the motion.
No. When she restructured the business office, which.
Yeah.
If.
So.
It was conditional, if.
Oh, right, yes, okay, sorry, yeah.
The contract with Inova for those three functions, then she's, Kathy's authorized to restructure the business office.
Yes, all right, so.
And I vote for that.
I forget, I.
I've already seconded it, so you're just looking for the vote, right?
Okay, so, so that's where I was lost, whether I had actually called the vote. All right, so.
You're doing fine.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, say.
Wait a minute, for the, for the record.
Yeah.
I said, if Kathy signs contract with Inova, Inova. We authorize Kathy to restructure the business office.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's the motion that was made and seconded.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
On that motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion is passed. Okay, go ahead.
I'm not gonna say anything, you are out of meeting.
Okay, so.
No, we need another motion.
We need another motion for this, for the.
And, and I wanna make a motion on the different Scotches I want you to bring back.
Just write them down, and then I'll be right where.
Anything.
Kathy to do that. They're duty free, you know, so.
Anything in the, in the, in the.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the credentialing.
Yes.
Accept the credentialing for Said Mir, MD Neurology. Vanessa Sue, MD Neurology. Craig McCarty, MD Family Medicine. Jia Yu Yuan, MD Neurology. David Delman, MD Neurology. And Adam Graham, MD Neurology.
Very good.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same.
You say, repeat the, the motion, I'm gonna hurt you.
Okay, so.
Who's in favor?
We have approved the.
I'm sorry to be beat up by the chair.
We have approved the credentials now. So do we want quickly decide or, or give some ideas about when we could do?
Just a minute, so David sent me the note, the CFO, and he said, I, he's been thinking, how about I, how about I send you my resume and you can share it with your board? They may like it or not, if not, at least we both know the situation and can figure it out from there, so, something out from there. So I'll get his resume and send it to you guys. I don't know if I'll have it before I leave, but.
I'm open to almost any day. Because, uh, training, if it's later in the afternoon.
Yeah.
So I, you know, trying to pick a day out is like chasing cats with their fun.
Yes. So we're talking, we're talking about doing legal training with Allison on conflict disclosures and HIPAA compliance?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, thank you, Karen, um, so, so in the next couple of months, is there weeks or times when you cannot do it?
I will be away.
I wanna know until we select a date.
Well, what I'm.
I gotta go ask permission from my bride.
Guess what I was thinking was if, if you know, I can right here just make a note of, of when you know you can't come, and then I can kind of, then I'll coordinate and talk.
Just so you know, I won't be here before the fifth.
Okay, so after the.
September third, the other.
September fifth.
September fifth, I know, it sounds so long, but it's really only two weeks.
I will be gone after September. We get around seven, September eighth is our week.
So September eighth, so Kathy's not here till, okay. Till September.
It's last by her.
That is on, week of September eighteenth. Okay, and when are you gone, Karen?
Right, on the eleventh.
September third through eleventh.
There comes a doubt.
The, the fifteenth and sixteenth look good.
Fifteenth and sixteenth?
The shipping block.
The eighteenth is a Thursday.
Pardon?
The eighteen is a Thursday, that's when you're.
So.
I, I'm going to Vegas for a week.
We're, starting on the eighteenth.
I have no idea, all I was told is about thirty days from now. So, the eighteenth's about thirty days.
That's our hospital award meeting.
Yeah. Or take it, you're taking orders from somebody higher.
I am told that I'm, I gotta go to these buyer shows, buyer, buyer, whatever.
I know, we're working.
I don't do it anymore. I don't do any, I don't carry the purse.
And the eleventh and twelfth were.
Her purse.
We're checking.
She's got all the money.
And I can't do it on the fourteenth. That's a Sunday, that's a Sunday anyway, the September.
Oh, then I'm not working.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Yeah, well, it's clearly not the fourteenth. Okay. And I can't do it the nineteenth and twentieth. Okay. And that's Friday Saturday.
Has anybody said no to the sixteenth, like she mentioned, because I didn't hear anybody say no to sixteen?
I'm open.
What day is that?
That's a Tuesday.
The only thing where you finance be if, afford, finance it for.
Unless we move it.
On the sixteenth, yeah, we do have finance at four. Um, we'll just get done, people.
Okay, well, I will, I will.
With you?
I will.
What you can do, Lynn.
We could, you guys meet for finance committee on the, on the Wednesday ahead of it, instead of the Tuesday? So, if the sixteenth works for the training, then we could do finance just a day early, a day, and it's for your family, we think.
We think, yes.
Maybe you'll want the gamble after finance committee.
Well, no, she gives me roundabout dates because she knows I won't remember what day it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, she tells me it's in one ear, out the other, and when I see the suitcase laid out, I know that I'm going.
So, I would say, let's say tentatively the sixteenth, and you check.
Aye.
And I'll, I'll send out texts and notices.
Do you guys want it at four?
I would say four. Does anybody else have any, does four, is four work with you, William?
PM?
Yeah.
Would that work for you, Allison?
Yeah, PM, that'll work great.
Okay.
That, it's still tentative, but most likely that'll be the day.
I have it blocked off, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
November seventh.
Sixteenth.
Well, you need to have finance.
Oh, finance, yeah. And if that doesn't work, then depending on what your schedules are, we could just have finance committee earlier.
Except if you're going over the Monday, except that's.
That's kinda hard for me, but.
Oh, yeah, that is.
We can always think, I, I don't wanna be the holdup here, I can work something out.
No, you're all the holdups, it's okay.
Yeah.
I don't like early either.
Well, I'm, I'm supposed to, about that point in time, you're supposed to.
I don't like early.
I've read about people that get up pretty much.
That would be Hannah, Hannah, four fifty in the morning.
So, I know, I'm not even sure if we're still in session, but I did have, wanna let you know, if we're still in session, that this ad on physical therapy department was awesome.
Thank you, yeah.
It was really awesome, so I don't know if everybody on the board saw it, um, but I think this was awesome, and I'd love to see more like that on more departments, it was great.
We will, we are doing a series of them, so.
Isn't always the fourth first? It's usually the.
So, which meeting will be that?
No, they're not adjourned yet. This is the. Can I make a motion?
Yes, she said make a motion, I think.
Yeah.
It was flat down.
So, yeah, that would be. You know, like nursing, if it's not ready for what it does, okay, is it always your first, first?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Anybody still standing? It's in trouble.
Nice.
Thank you, good night.
Everybody, for doing that, so. Thanks.